Welcome to the April 4th, 2012 Ashland School Committee Meeting. We're here tonight, this is our second evening of interviews with potential superintendents. We're here with our finalist Brooke Clenchey. She's currently superintendent in the town of Winchenden. And we're gonna begin tonight, let me read our vision statement and then we will talk about how we'll proceed. "The Ashland Public Schools is committed to being at the forefront of student achievement by preparing students to be college and career-ready while promoting independence, respect, and critical thinking skills necessary to succeed as problem solvers in the 21st century." So that is our vision. With that, tonight, we will proceed in the following way. We'll begin with the candidate having an opening statement. That will be followed by questions from each member of the school committee. And we will end with your opportunity to give us a closing statement, okay?
Thank you.
So first, I just want to tell you, welcome to Ashland. We're very happy to have you here.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I would say thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. I had a wonderful day today, just an absolutely wonderful day. It was a whirlwind trip, there's certainly no choice about that, it was absolutely whirlwind. But the opportunity to visit each of the schools and see what's happening inside in a more intimate look was just fabulous. I really enjoyed that. You have a tremendous school district here. So to just even be part of this process, I feel privileged. So I would want to thank you right out of the gate for the opportunity to be here tonight. In terms of an opening statement, I would want to just put forward some, I guess, credentials and background, context if you will, of my background. I served as a teacher for almost 20 years, just right around the 20-year mark. And as I had said to some of the groups today, I have taught something at every grade level, K to 12. I was trained though as a high school teacher that fell in love with dealing with middle school. And that really was my area of passion as a teacher, was teaching middle school students. Having said that, I love the youngest of our children. And certainly when I was over at the pre-K and saw our tiniest people over there, oh my gosh, it just fills your heart and soul. So it was a fabulous time as I worked through my teaching years. From there, I went on to be principal in three very different, although there were some commonalities, three different schools, two K to 12 environments and one middle school environment that was more urban in nature. And my first administrative job in central office was as basically a director of curriculum. However, by first morning, the superintendent who hired me let me know that she would be leaving the district right away. And within literally hours and days, I became the acting superintendent. So it wasn't something that I was really looking for at that point in time, it's something that happened. And from there, I served in Mendus superintendent. And now, I'm just finishing up my fourth year in Winchenden, going into my fifth year there. And it has been a wonderful journey. I love the role of superintendent. And as I had said to a group earlier today, I think for me, as much as I loved being a teacher and I loved being a principal, I love the niche in my life right now as superintendent. I love the challenges that it brings, I love the problem solving that's required, and I love everything about the position. So from that perspective, that's a snapshot of the career. I'm really delighted to be here tonight. I think that Ashland is an incredibly high-performing district, and I'm really proud of the fact that I am sitting here with you this evening. So I thank you so much for that opportunity.
Thank you. All right, let's move right in. Pat?
If you're selected as superintendent, could you please tell us or describe how you see Ashland looking within five years?
Again, I will go back to some of the things, I'm just going to reiterate some of the things that I said earlier today. From my perspective in visiting through your school district today, you have so many things that are working so well. And I referred pretty consistently today to the State of the Schools address that you had a couple of weeks back that I attended and just loved what I saw. And I think that as I sat in the audience and I watched the initiatives, for example, that you are undertaking right now, I would see a couple of years from now, some real impact because the initiatives that you are starting right now, and as they gain more and more traction, you will see different things happen. The PBIS is a prime example. And the PBIS is a follow-up to the second step that you have going on in your elementary schools right now. It's a beautiful continuum. So in terms of the culture, particularly at the high school, and I know that Jim and I had talked about that a little bit earlier today, I think you'll see a real, really nice impact in that area as the PBIS makes its way through. You're also working with the RTI, your Response to Intervention and Tiered Instruction, and again, outstanding initiatives. So I would suspect that as those continue to gain more and more traction, you will see continued success. As I said to, I think it was one of the students who asked today in Mendus about improving the school district. And I said, you know, I don't know that you need a lot of improving because you're doing wonderful things in the school district right now. I think the challenge is going to be maintaining and sustaining the work that you've got going at this point in time. I would say though, of all the positives that I saw, and there were so many, I think the buildings need a little bit of tender loving care, for lack of a better way of putting it. There are some things that you can see right away, of course, and I'll go back, I think it was even Mendus schools, I think back, and I noticed that every other light, for example, was not on. And the comment was made, well, I think it's really to save energy, which it might well be. But there are wonderful programs out there right now to be able to tap into for grant monies to come back in and replace some of those, the lighting fixtures right now, bump up the lumens in the classroom while being more energy efficient. So I think some of those little things probably could be well looked at and very successful in the next couple of years as you take a look at your buildings. In the classrooms though, I would think that really, I think it's going to be about maintaining those initiatives that you've got going right now.
Thank you. What do you believe is the single most important thing a superintendent can do to set the tone or climate for a school district?
The single most important? I don't know that a single thing comes to mind. As you asked the question, I thought, I can think of maybe 10 or 20 things, I don't know that I can find a single. But I would go after the question this way, and I would say that I suggest to you that I mentioned this in the admin group this morning. One of the things that appealed to me that night with the State of the Schools address and what impressed me so much with your admin team today was the fact that the passion for doing what's right for children is at the forefront. That, in my mind, has to remain there. And I think if you make good decisions for children at the forefront, everything else evolves very nicely around that. And I don't think you can go wrong when you make the right decisions for children. So I think in part, when you look at guiding principles that help your administrative team and set the tone for your district, those are the kinds of things philosophically that you need to all be on the same page with. I would suggest to you, for example, as we took a look at our budget process this year in Winchenden, we always set guiding principles first as an administrative team, always. And say, these are the things that are going to guide us through our process. Always at the first, the number one thing is children and education will remain at the forefront of every decision we make. And every year, we revisit it and say, do we still believe this? Is this still what drives us? And it continually, since I've been there, has been. So we buy into that collectively, not that there's a lot of real buying that has to be done, but we accept that as the very base of how we operate our school district. So I guess that would be the number one guiding principle.
Let me ask a follow-up if I could, because it's interesting to talk about children being at the forefront, but there are times, I'm sure you've had them, and I'm wondering if you could reflect, when the needs of one child are different from the needs of another and the superintendent needs to sort of, it's not a one-size-fits-all. So have you had an experience?
No, it's not.
How do you set the needs of, you know, and make sure that all the children are forefront?
You know, the word balance continually came up today. It didn't matter whether we were talking about initiatives and too many initiatives versus too few initiatives, whether you're talking about special education versus non-special education. There has to be balance that is sought and attained in a school district in order for it to be successful. That does not mean equal though, and I think sometimes people mistake that. Being equitable and being equal are very different things. And so I think as an administrative team, you need to keep that in mind as you're making decisions going along the way. And I would suggest that sometimes that also happens with staff as well. Even though your focus is on children, at the end of the day, you need to find the balance between what's right for children, what's right for staff, what's right for admin, what's right for parents. It's like a big wheel with all these spokes out of it, but at the center of that wheel is the children. You know, how you maneuver through the spokes is, I think, the largest task for your administrative team. So you're absolutely right, and I would agree with you. You didn't say the word equal, but I will say, it's not always equal, but we have to be equitable in how we deal with everything.
Thank you. I'm next. So Brooke, what would be your top priorities for Ashland students?
In terms of academic, in terms of...
Well, whatever your priorities are, if they're academic or if you see something else that is more important to you, looking for what are your values in terms of what students need?
And that's a wonderful question. I'm going to go back to your State of the Schools address, and one of the things that impressed me the most, and it's come up today throughout the course of the day, is looking at the whole child. And again, there were moments at that night when you just looked and said, as an administrator, that's exactly where they need to be heading. And there were a number of references that your administrative team made to working towards the whole child. One of your students asked today, and it was young Willa at Mendus, and she said, how do you feel about fine arts and physical education and that kind of thing? And they had technology in there, they had a whole myriad of topics within the one question. And I said, you know, I feel so strongly about fine arts and physical education and all of that, that in spite of the fact that we made huge cuts within the last three budget cycles, not this year, but the three previous, we never once cut into our fine arts program or our physical education, and we actually bumped up our library. So that would tell you, I hope, send that quiet message that I feel it's so important that we look at the whole child, not just the academics. The academics are a strong piece, so I don't want to minimalize the academic piece, but it is a piece of a child, it is not the whole child. And there will be some children where the academics really don't even fit into their world. So it comes back to balance again. How do you balance all of this to make sure that you are trying to aim and trying to connect with as many children as you possibly can to see them be successful, in whatever that looks like? Sometimes it's not always the academics. But again, I want to stress, I am not minimizing the academics, but I do stress what I loved about that evening was looking at the whole child. So I would say that's the lens that I tend to look through, is the whole child lens.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll combine a follow-up question with my question because it's related to the budget. So the question I was going to ask is, based upon what you know of our administrators' process of budget development, what would your particular skills add to that process? And maybe tying back to your prior answer on the whole child, could you give us some specific initiatives or approaches or techniques that you've used in developing your budgets before that you might be able to bring to Ashland?
One of the things I had asked today was about a grant writer. And I think, but we may have even touched on this when you were up in Winchenden, we do have a grant writer in Winchenden. And the vast majority of her salary is paid for out of the grants that she writes. One of the reasons that we were able to make absolutely no cuts this year is because we were able to tap into a number of different funds, if you will, that we were able to garner so that we didn't have to make some of the cuts that we've made in previous years. You don't have a grant writer. My understanding in talking to the administrators is that you have somebody who proofreads your grants and that kind of thing. What we have is somebody who's consistently scrolling, looking for the grants that are out there. And that's a huge help. And so, to the tune of about $2 million for Winchenden, above and beyond the foundation monies that we were talking about. And keep in mind that Winchenden too is a minimum contribution plus Chapter 70. That's all. That's all the money that funds our district. So we have to be creative in how we look at things. One of the other things, and not necessarily that I would encourage that you go down this road, but in talking to your high school principal today, taking a look at how you block your days, your scheduling, and all of those kinds of things are things that we look at when we try to orchestrate how we can maximize the dollars that we have. And again, I'm not suggesting that that's a road you'd take a look at, but that's a road we had to look at. Because by changing our scheduling, we were able to cut, and this was last year, five teaching positions. You know, so, and again, not promoting that, it's just what we had to do. One of the strengths of our team was when I first came to the district, I said, I could clearly see that the admin was not familiar with our budget, our process, other than just their silo, if you will, of their particular school. And I could tell that what we needed to do was shift away from those silos and start to look at the district lens. What was right for the district? And it was such a paradigm shift as we started to go down that road. But I would do that again in a district if there wasn't that lens, because it was incredibly positive for us. It definitely shifted how we looked at our budget process. And we tied that in with the initiatives, just probably as you would here, and said, okay, again, looking at the whole child, what do we believe is extraordinarily important to us? And again, as we looked at our guiding principles that we created for driving our budget process, we continually kept coming back to it. For example, my high school principal said, you know what, I can do without this position right now this year so that we can fund this position over at Toy Town Elementary School. Because we knew that literacy was a key issue in our district. And that's what we did. So we gave up some things at the high school to make sure that Toy Town had exactly what it needed. Now, we were able to restore those things the next year, but it was about looking through the lens of a district-wide lens rather than the silos. That may or may not be something of benefit to Ashland, but in Winchenden, it was. Every school district is different. And I think it goes back to exactly, Lori, what you're saying, what are the core values? What are the things that are most important to Ashland? That's where you really need to come from. Not what necessarily would work in another district, but how can something like that work specifically in Ashland? And that would probably be the lens that I would take when we look at budget.
Thank you.
That kind of ties into my question.
Well, that's a nice segue.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark. Did you finish your question, Mark?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Sorry. So here's mine. He's jumping ahead of me. So describe for us how you will improve the overall quality of our staff, including, you know, how you would deal with staff all across the spectrum, whether they're underperforming or they're, you know, they're adequate but maybe not energized, and as well as those who are doing a super job and you want to continue to reward and motivate them.
Well, I think a couple of things are coming into place. Of course, the new evaluation system is coming into place. And I think that that is going to, just by the virtue of what it represents, will make, it will have to make an impact statewide in all districts, whatever that would look like. Let me go back to our district right now, and I had said this to a couple of you earlier. For example, when I took a look at the art program that we've got doing right now at the high school level, it's fabulous. Our high school teachers would love, our art teachers would love to come and see what you're doing here. It's a wonderful program. When you talk about re-energizing staff, I would suggest to you that when I first came into Winchenden, that was a problem for us. We had good staff, but they weren't energized. They had the capacity and they had the know-how, they had the cognitive base, they had everything necessary, but it was almost like they just needed that little extra to re-energize them. And what we did, we sent a lot of people out to see where really good programs were operating in other parts of the state and sent them out to those programs, not unlike I would love to do when I go back to Winchenden now and send some of our art people here to say, you need to see an art program that's really quite on fire. Because it is. It's exciting. When you can walk into a classroom like I did today and see the quality of the product that's being produced, it's those kinds of things that energize teachers. We did the same thing with our physical education department as well. We sent them off early in the game, in my very first year there. We did all kinds of different things, but sending them out to see quality programs was one of them. Beyond that, we also made sure that they were financially supported in areas where there hadn't been financial support before. So making sure that our people had the right tools to do a solid job was another piece of it. What I found when I went into Winchenden was that we had people wanting to do a great job, but they didn't have the necessary tools to do it. So those are other areas that you look at, other than just the obvious. And, you know, I think lighting different people on fire is not necessarily linked to any evaluation. And I think sometimes people go there first. Sometimes it's not, that's not the first place to go. Evaluations serve purposes, and I absolutely understand that. I understand the importance of evaluation as a tool for professional growth. And I'm going to speak to evaluations for just a moment because that was an area too that certainly I, and I've had this discussion already earlier today too. I can see that the evaluation process is one of the areas that probably needs to be bumped up in Ashland. And it goes back to your very first question, Pat, you know, what are areas of improvement? That's, I think that that's an area that can be improved upon in Ashland. Sometimes it's as simple as just finding that consistency, knowing who's going to be evaluated when, and doing the appropriate follow-through. You cannot just walk the walk. You can't just talk and not follow it through. You have to walk the talk. If you say you're going to do it, no different than when I was a teacher. If I said something was going to happen, by golly, it happened. I did the same thing as a principal, I do the same thing now as a superintendent. If that's the process that we're going to take, you can rest sure that's what we're going to do. So I believe that that's an area now, is you accept that evaluation tool into your system, then it's going to behoove the administrative team to make sure that it's done appropriately and consistently in a timely manner. So I think that that would be another area when you're looking at teachers. I said this earlier, and I'm going to say this again tonight too, I believe that all teachers are good teachers, very similar to, I believe that all kids are good kids. Sometimes students make poor choices, but at their hearts, they're generally good kids. It's a case of redirecting and trying to find how you can maximize their potential. I feel the same way about teachers. You can generally redirect, you can generally support, help, facilitate, nurture, you can do all of those things. And most often, you will see a teacher continue to rise again. In some ways, but it's not this simple. You do raise a bar a little bit, you do say, I believe in you, I think you can come to this level, let's watch it. I did that as a parent, you know, and now I do that as a superintendent, because I believe in people. However, at the end of the day, when you've gone through everything and it's not been effective, then you have to take a different journey. And I understand that, and I'm very accepting of that piece too.
Thank you.
Let me ask my question. I just wanted to go back a little bit to the arts. How did you identify those districts that had excellent or...
Programs or...
Programs?
There are a couple of different ways, I think, that you look at it. Part, I'll give you one example, and actually, if I can just expand on this a little bit, and it's going to speak to the Winchenden experience, so it'll take me a minute to explain this, but you'll see where I'm going with it shortly. Moving into Winchenden, it was a district that needed some tender loving care, it really did. And when I first went into the district, there wasn't an appetite, if you will, to meet alone with the superintendent. So anytime I wanted to meet with anyone, whether it was a teacher, or a parent, or administrator, the only way they would meet with me is in a group meeting or with union representation. There was a real sense of distrust at that point in time. And that was something that really had to be rebuilt in Winchenden. I would tell you, it is rebuilt right now. But it created issues for me because I thought, how can I move a district forward if no one will meet with me one-on-one or what have you? So I thought, okay, it was a case of, as I said earlier, taking the lemons and making the lemonade. What is this going to look like? So I sat back and I thought, okay, if we're going to build trust, how can I get to these people and start to build the relationships? Because when you talk about core values, relationships in a district is paramount. It's pivotal to moving a school district forward, good, solid, trusting relationships. So we started with custodian, my custodian group, I started, because I started to look at pride. I thought, we need to build from pride out. I started with custodians because I thought, if we've got clean buildings that are welcoming, and this goes back to an earlier conversation, where people want to come into those buildings, they feel really good and they take a lot of pride in it, then we're going to have some success there. I knew that there was a great, at that time, facilities manager in Hudson. So when I sat down with the team and I said, what, the team in my district in Winchenden, what are things that bother you, and then I'm going to tell you some things that bother me? And they said, okay. So they went through, and that's also a big part of why I think we've been successful, because we turned a corner. And I see also that same thing in Ashland, where you have to be incredibly truthful with where you're at. And you're incredibly self-reflective. So we sat down with the team of custodians and they said, this is what we're frustrated with. They didn't feel that they had the necessary tools, and they were right. They didn't feel they had the necessary products, and they were right. And they felt that they lacked some very basic skills. So I happen to know that Hudson had a great facilities manager. I lined them up, they went on a road trip. They came back just so enthused. It was like, oh my gosh, Brooke, look at what we did. So when we did the debrief, it was, these are great skills. Yes, you know what, let's go out and buy that floor product. Now, I give you this as an example just because it was the first example in Winchenden. So that's how we came to be with that. The special education would be another example though. There, I didn't have a good program to send them out to. But when I brought them in and I said, because that was another team meeting that we brought them in district-wide, and said, tell me about areas that you know of that are running top-notch programs. They just started coming up with them right away. I said, okay, let me call into those superintendents, which is exactly what I did, and said, we'd like to have a road trip to your school district to see this program, this particular life skills program, or what have you. That's exactly what we did. They all went off to these incredible programs. We harvested, not stole, we harvested great ideas. We brought them back to the district, they're in place now. So part of it comes from them, part of it comes from my own networking in the state where I know that things are working exceedingly well. Or trips like today where you say, this is perfect, I have a perfect person that would love to see this. So, you know, you come at it a number of different ways. I would tell you, when it comes from them, it's generally more successful rather than coming from me. I've also sent some groups out, for example, our cafeteria people, and I said, I don't know of a really good cafeteria program, do you? Nobody knew. I said, why don't you go out, make calls, find out what cafeteria food services programs are making money, are feeding their kids properly, and are presenting food properly, and are exactly what we want to be? And they did, they came back, we had another team meeting, they said, we've got some great ideas, fabulous. Sent them out on several road trips. What was interesting about that one is a couple of them that they went out to, they came back and said, oh my gosh, it was just awful. It wasn't what we thought at all. And I said, that's just as successful. Finding a district where it's not working as well as ours, that's okay. So it comes from all kinds, short answer, it comes from all kinds of places.
Thank you. Okay, so then, my next question is, if you could discuss the differences in our administration, administrative structure... administrative structure, that you are currently experiencing, and describe how you believe you would be able to put your talents into what you know at the school you're at, into our school, if indeed it was indicated.
I see a lot of my own administration team qualities and characteristics and core values in yours. I thought it was ever so interesting that the vice principal from my high school tonight would come here to support me here in Ashland. I thought that was just incredibly, incredibly precious. I see those kinds of special qualities, I see in your own administrative team. You know, they want to support whoever's at the leadership helm. You can see that. I think your team is incredibly self-reflective. As I saw them today, my own team didn't used to be self-reflective, but it's incredibly self-reflective right now. And when you're in that position, you are able to move a district forward. For example, one of your administrators said to me tonight, at the reception earlier, we are always looking to improve. Yes, that's exactly what you want. You're always wanting to look to improve and be better at your job, and do better things for children. And it's not that you're doing anything wrong or bad, because you're not. And in Ashland, again, I would say, how can you not walk away from this district and not want to be part of it? I just, I can't see that. And again, as I said to you earlier, that State of the School address that night, turning to my husband on the way out and saying, how can you not want to be part of this school district? So I would say that, and I think because of that, you have an administrative team who I thought performed exceedingly well that night. And what caught my attention was the level of passion they had for the job, for the children, and I thought that they just articulated themselves so particularly well that evening. They're a team that's ready to just move everything forward. I would love to be at the helm of that team. I think you've built a very solid team. You've got a great variety. You've got seasoned people. You've got new people. You've got people in the center. You've got a perfect blend right now. It's like the perfect cocktail, the perfect mix. It's just finding that last missing piece for you right now, which is your superintendent. I think once that's in place, I think you're going to see it really take off. So I would suggest that really, everything that I'm doing right now with my current admin team is very transferable to this particular group of people, from my perspective, from what I saw today. I didn't see gaping holes, gaping knowledge, or, I really, I didn't even see anyone in that group today that was, and you'll probably understand when I say, we've done it like this for 20 years. I didn't see any of that today, you know? And so this is how we have to do it. I did not see that. I saw vibrancy, and I saw good things from that admin team today, that I think are going to serve the district particularly well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's me again. There is always a small percentage of students who do not qualify for special education, yet they struggle with attendance, work completion, and overall school success. What is your vision for supporting these students and assuring their success in public
That's really a loaded question. And I don't know if I even have a succinct answer that I can give to that question. You know, as I said earlier, I think when I talked about believing in teachers and believing in children, I still, I'm going to go back to that, to be honest with you, in answering that question. I think it behooves us as educators to take a look and find what is going to help support that child. We had a DESE review recently that was just released and is available on the MA DESE website that you can, if you look under accountability and go under accountability for the second tab, they'll bring up a menu on the left side. And if you go to district reviews, you're able to go down to Winchandon and find it very, very quickly. One of the things that was stated in that particular review referred to our Toy Town Elementary School. Toy Town Elementary School, when I took over the district, was fumbling. It really was. It was a school in need of a lot of guidance, a lot of nurturing, and a lot of commitment here. We put some things into place, and as you heard me say earlier, we really sat down and looked as a district to how we could support that particular school to get it back on its feet again. Because it just wasn't. It just wasn't. It had low expectations. It had, it just had a lot of issues. But it had good staff in it, and it had great kids in it. What we needed to do was bring that staff to a level of confidence and support that they were able to match themselves up. When that DESE review came out, just a couple of weeks ago, it spoke to Toy Town Elementary School. In fact, Toy Town Elementary School was on the commendation list with the commissioner last year. So that should tell you how far we were able to collectively bring that school, because not only did it exceed expectations, the commissioner mentioned it as one of the schools that was really excelling and put it on his list of commendation schools. When the DESE sent their review team out to Winchandon, they sent a separate team just to look at Toy Town Elementary School to say, what happened to this school in this short period of time that moved it from here to here? One of the comments that it made in the DESE review was that no child was left behind at Toy Town Elementary School. Which ties in with your question. You can't look and forget about that group, or turn a blind eye. I don't agree with the no child left behind act, but I believe in the premise of no child left behind. Very different, very, very different. So I think as educators, you need to go back after those children, and it goes back to the core values, and it goes back to the fact that you're looking at the whole child and seeing what the strengths are of those children. Because they have strengths. I think you need to focus on that. I don't think it's as simple as, for example, running a 504, or what have you. I don't think it's, and I'm not suggesting 504s are simple, because they're absolutely not. But that's not a one, a one key will fit all locks, in terms of looking after those children. But we cannot forget about the children that are in the middle with the kind of scenario that you're talking about. So I'm not sure if that's really the type of answer that you were looking at, but that would be how I would see it. I think we need to go back and have a second look. If there are a group that are being missed, we need to have a second look as a district.
Can I just follow? What did Toy Town do that made sure that no child was left? Is there a program they did?
It was a mall. Again, I would tell you, we looked as a district at Toy Town. We didn't just look as a school. We looked as a district. And again, we looked at philosophically, where do we stand as a school district and how we support this? We put a number of things into place. We had, we hired a new principal, and he had a wonderful vision for Toy Town Elementary School. One of those visions was, he wanted very much to bring learning alive in that district. In fact, they have a Toy Town Comes Alive Night once a year. And the whole idea is that you go in and see all the exciting things that are happening at Toy Town. One of the pieces of his, for example, and this ties in with how we looked at it as a district, one of the pieces of his vision is that there would be an eno board or smart board in every single classroom. Every single classroom. Well, we knew that that was far too much money, because you're looking at $6,000 to $8,000 per eno board. So that's a lot of money per classroom. But we looked at it as an administrative team, and we chunked it off and said, you know what? For the next three years, this is going to be the goal. We, as Winchandon Public Schools, will support Toy Town. And that means that some of our high school things, for example, kind of gave up a little bit of some of our foundation money. Because really, the eno boards and smart boards came pretty much 100% from foundation monies. We have two foundations that support Winchandon Public Schools. One, we receive about $200,000 and change. I don't want to be specific, because that's not fair to the foundation that gives us. We apply for grant through them, and they support it. The other foundation that we have is Murdoch Trust, and they support us with about $140,000 plus. This year, it was $155,000. So we took a look and said, if this is going to be our priority, and we're going to chunk this off and be successful at it, what is that going to look like? Well, now, we're at the end of the third year, we're really at the end of the fourth year, and there's a smart board in every single classroom. Through that, then, we also started to send, again, it goes back to your question. I said, well, who do we know that's running a really successful program with technology and tying that in inclusively with all of their instruction? We knew that Reading was. Again, road trip. We sent a whole group of teachers off to Reading and started a beautiful partnership with Reading and all of the technology that was happening there within their classrooms. To the point where those teachers have remained connected years after we sent them the first time around. And again, you talk about lighting teachers on fire. That was one of those things. You know, and I remember meeting up with the teachers in the hallway after they got back from Reading, and they said, oh my goodness, Brooke, you've got to see what they're doing over there. What can we bring back? Well, they had all kinds of ideas. Fabulous. We put a lot of those into place. And to the point, too, where they said, there's such a different culture there than we have here. So I sat down with some of the teachers. I said, talk to me about the culture and the difference that you see between Reading and Toy Town. Well, we see much more respect. We see behaviors that we'd like to see. So it wasn't just about the technology, but that's where they started. But they brought back a lot from that. So we sent them out for several trips. And in fact, they got together during the summer months and planned some other things together. So it was very, very successful. So it wasn't just a one-shot deal. It wasn't just a case of saying, well, we'll put a new principal into place. It was a principal, it was a vision, it was then tying in the vice principal with a similar vision, then getting the staff to buy in. There were a lot, there were a myriad of things that came into play that ultimately ended up at Toy Town being a school on the commendation list. And I'm fiercely proud of that school.
Can I ask another follow-up to that, Brooke? Did you, or would you do any work with your staff and administration about, how do we identify these kids? What are we looking for? And how do we respond to them? Was there any kind of training and how to make sure no child is left behind? I mean, it sounds like great as a concept, but is there a program in place about how do we find these kids? Who's looking?
I would, that's a very good question. I don't think, though, that we ever said that there was one specific program that would help us. But I would suggest, the PBIS program that you're putting into place, for example, is one of those things that helped us shift our culture in that particular building. And again, one of the strengths of Ashland right now is that you have this nice continuum from the second step right through. We also looked at that and said, what does that continuum look like for us? So I don't think it was a case, to be honest with you, I think that once we shifted our culture, one of the other things that's identified in the DESE review is that it went to, it became a student-centered school. And that was huge. That was absolutely huge for Toy Town. And again, it wasn't a school that was incredibly broken with no hope. It was a school that just needed that tender loving care. But the fact that we said, we're not going to leave children behind here, and you need to help to make sure that there are no children left behind. Put the accountability back to those teachers, back to the principals, and the principal and the vice principal. But I would tell you too, for example, when I first took over, we had a lot of students wandering hallways. We don't have that anymore. That was part of that cultural shift. No, we're going to leave them in the classroom. And if you feel you need some different techniques, we'll send you out to get those techniques, whether it's management, classroom management skills, whether it's differentiated instruction, whether, that's another piece. I mean, when you go back to programs, it's not just a case of taking courses on differentiated instruction, it's actual implementation of differentiated instruction in your classroom. So if you see a child not getting it the first time, you have to ask, what else can I do to teach this child? And how can I differentiate my instruction to make sure that that works? So, no, I don't think that it was a case of identifying the students, because what we found is, once we changed the culture, and once there was a level, and when I say a level of accountability, it wasn't a disciplinarian type of, this is what's going to happen. It was just a case of raising that bar and saying, we can do this, and we will do this together. We all owned Toy Town. Not, and I would say, including our administrative team at Central Office. They were the ones that came in and said, we are going to do tiered instruction, we are going to do these kinds of things, and identify the children that are falling through the holes with literacy. That we did. But in terms of just generally speaking, no, we found, once we went after that, a lot of things changed for the better very, very quickly. It didn't need a program to identify specifics.
Okay, thank you. And my next question, I know you've answered pieces of it as we've gone along here, but I asked what your values were, your top priorities for the students, and now wondering about your top values for your staff and administration.
You know, I think that, I don't know that I'm going to come from an instructional perspective. That's a great question. That's the first time I've ever been asked that question. I don't know that I'm going to come at it from an instructional perspective. I think I would come at it more from a character perspective and character of a team, not character of an individual, but character of a team. As I said today, they were asking, the team was asking me, what are things that your team would say about you? And I thought, okay, what, they weren't asking for the one-word snapshots, but I'll say the one-word snapshots, you know? What are characteristics of really effective leadership? And so I'm going to go after the team first, the administrative team. I think if you know right away, if that admin team knows that I will respect their decisions, but I would look for that respect back. I will give honesty, always, but I would expect that back. I will always tell you the whole story, but I'll expect the whole story back. So I think it's, I think you role model what you're looking for to come back at you. And isn't that, again, isn't that what we do as parents? You know?
We try.
I mean, when I look to my own children, who are now 27 and 25, always, it was, don't ever lie to me. Don't ever, ever lie to me. I will never lie to you. Don't ever lie back. And so that created a really nice space to operate from, because you could always deal with the truths, as much as I know. Now, my children may have stretched the truth from time to time through the teens, but as you look now at 25 and 27, you get the straight shot all the time. I can deal with that, you know? So a lot of the parenting things that you put into place are not, I think, are transferable skills, if you will, to a superintendent, as you're looking at this. So I think those are the kind, those would be the things that I would say are most important to me. For example, too, when I was principling, I never wanted to be micromanaged. I felt I could do a really good job. I wanted to look to my super for guidance, for nurturing, for encouraging, for support, but please let me try to do my job first as a principal. Now, the other side is, my administrators, and I believe even said this to you, if we need a hand-slapping, we get that too, because of, you know, sometimes there are times where you say, was that really the best decision you could have made? I'm not really sure if it was. However, that doesn't mean that it's bad, but if it's a mistake, I bet they'll never do it again. Same with raising the children. I don't, I never minded when our children made mistakes. It was the best teacher they could have had, more than the mom or the dad could ever have done. I feel that same way even as an administrator. Teachers are great mistakes, they're great character builders. So I don't mind when an administrator makes a mistake, but I will be there to pick up the pieces and help to support them and move it along to that next level. So that's probably a very different answer than you may get from other superintendents who sit in this chair. But I would say, I probably would come more from characteristics and core value, rather than instructional pieces.
Please describe your current education contacts at the state level, and help us understand how those contacts may be able to benefit us if you were to become the superintendent nationally.
That's a very interesting question. As a result of being in Winchandon, and it's, I don't know, different as this may sound, because it was underperforming, and at the level that it was at when I took over the reins, because it excelled so quickly, it caught the eye of people that normally you wouldn't expect it to catch. The eye... you wouldn't expect it to catch the eye of. And so for that reason, I tended to sometimes be in a spotlight that I never anticipated I would be in. For example, the commissioner clearly knows who I am. It started because he came out to Winchandon, I think, within the first couple of weeks of his, his journey with the state. And so as a result of that, we've maintained a very good connection, he and I. So that wouldn't stop because I left Winchandon. It would just be because I, I certainly appreciate where he comes from. He and I would certainly, though, just, we would have to agree, agree to disagree philosophically, though, on some issues, I would tell you that as well. I look very much to MASC and MASSS for guidance. Certainly, I wouldn't hesitate to bring up, to call up to either Mike or Glenn Kuchar or Pat Carrera, any, anyone from MASC to help, especially in the areas of policy and that kind of thing. You know, when you're wanting to see, to see what's going on somewhere else in the state, I don't like to operate in isolation. I don't think it's healthy, and I don't think it's right for the district that you're serving. So I think to be able to move beyond the district and go to those type of partners, I think, is critical. Going back to the state for a moment, too, because we were tied in in certain areas, for example, with our DSAC, which I, I don't think you have connections necessarily with your DSAC. You probably have connections with your readiness center, but you don't with your DSAC. The DSAC is a district and school assistance center. We formed a very tight relationship with our central Massachusetts DSAC, which is an, an extraneous route, if you will, from, it's still connected to the Department of Education. So as a result of that, there were a lot of partnerships that were created with the superintendent and our people at our central office level that, again, wouldn't, wouldn't be lost because I've left Winchandon. So whether you're talking, you know, somebody like Peter Holland or Joe Connor now that has taken over, Peter Azar, of course, I, it was the superintendent before I was, and Winchandon, he is now the executive director of, of the readiness center in central Massachusetts. I have an excellent relationship with him. Those kinds of relationships will not stop in leaving Winchandon. MASSS, I connect with them regularly. I love to follow Paul Andrews, because of course, the legislative piece, I'm always interested in what's going on in the legislature. So I tend to follow Paul's snapshots, if you will, synopsis as he sends them out. Tom Scott is just invaluable to all superintendents across the state. I have a great deal of respect for Tom Scott. I really do. And he's always led me down a path that was the right path, if I've called him, said, "I'm not sure quite how this follows," and he's never led me astray. So I think connections like that will not stop with me leaving Winchandon. I think that they would just carry forward as I move on to wherever the next district would be. I have a great deal of respect for, for all of those people that I've, and, and including the commissioner, even though he and I would have to agree to disagree on certain things.
Thank you.
So, you know, as you know, this is all about fit. So my question is about fit. So you've had an opportunity to get to know Ashland, and so with all that you've learned about our community, tell us why you're the best fit for us.
I, you know what? I think I am.
There you go.
And you know, even, my husband asked me tonight, when I, I went home and the two-hour time period that I had between the day, that was just a fabulous day, and tonight, he asked me the question. He said, "Do you think you're the right fit?" And I said, "You know, I think I am." For a mult, a multitude of reasons, though. There's the basics. There are the basics, like sitting at that State of the Schools address and watching all these initiatives, and knowing full well that I know the ins and outs of basically every initiative you've got going. So there's that piece. So that, that says to me, and again, it's all the other flags that you pick up, in, it isn't just the basics, but that's a basic. And you say to yourself, "Well, you know what? I'm pretty well-schooled in PBIS, I'm pretty well-schooled in tiered instruction, and the liter, the Balanced Literacy Initiative is something else, I'd mention that, but you've got that going at your, your elementary buildings." And so I was able to talk the same language to your elementary principals today, because I knew exactly what they were doing when they said, "Well, we're trying to, you know, build the guided reading library." I get it. I understand exactly what they're trying to do. As I watched what they were doing inside of the classrooms, I understood exactly why they were creating the centers that they were creating, and I understood that. So on a basic level, like, in, in terms of those kinds of things, I thought, yeah, I could fit very smoothly into, to that part of, of your world. One of the questions that has been asked of me is, "Well, would you bring some new initiatives in?" And I refer to what we did this year, Mike Schmoker Focus, that was the name of the book. I couldn't remember the name today when I was talking about it with the elementary teachers. Mike Schmoker wrote a book called Focus. And when I was on my way to national conference, the AESA conference in Denver, I had a very long stayover in Wisconsin, and that was right at the time that all of the union activity was happening. In fact, it was that day, and I had this very extended time layover in Wisconsin. So I thought, you know, I, I had the book in my pocket, and I thought, you know, I'm going to read the book while I'm sitting here. And in it, Mike Schmoker talks about the, the idea or the, the ability to maybe oversaturate our staff with initiatives. And where do you come to the point and you say, and he says in the book, "Wouldn't it be interesting if a superintendent went and said, 'You know what? I think we have enough initiatives going right now. I don't think we need a lot more.'" I called the, my Director of Instruction and Curriculum, and I said, "Jane, do you have that book on your shelf?" And she said, "Well, yes, I do." And I said, "Can you turn it to whatever page I was on?" And she said, "Yes." I said, "Read this page." And she did, and she said, "Oh, my goodness. This resonates with where we're at in Winchandon." I would suggest to you that I think it's almost what resonates here in Ashland, too, from what I saw today. You've got enough initiatives going, and I think people really want to do well. I got, I picked that up more than once today. People really want to do a good job of the initiatives that you've got going right now. When I started the new year with my first-day presentation, back to school this year, I talked to them about the book. And I said, "For this year, other than curriculum, which we have to do, there aren't going to be any more new initiatives that we are going to embrace. We are going to give time for traction to happen with the other initiatives that we've already got started." Again, I would refer back to the DESE review that basically said, "We've given time for those initiatives to get traction. It's exactly what we want." That, I believe, is what you want, too. So as I heard these people talking today, you talk about the right fit, and I thought, I really understood where they were coming from. And I think that that's probably almost where, you almost need a year to just focus on the work that you've got started and make sure it gains traction. Other fits, certainly, as I took, that's quite the rain coming down, isn't it? We all look up to the ceiling. I don't think it's going to come in, but it's very, very strong. It sounds almost like a monsoon, actually, doesn't it? In terms of other parts of the right fit, as I took a look at and watched and listened to your admin team today, I believe that I could be the right leadership fit for what, for what I believe they need, and for what I believe they believe they need, which may be two different things. But at the end of the day, I think I'm the right fit for both, for what I think and for what I think that they think. Beyond that, we talked about the core values. I think our core values are pretty much identical, to be honest with you. I think to that end, I get where Ashland is going and wants to take its children and where it wants to take its education. So to that end, I believe I'm the right fit. I think I'm the right fit on, on a multitude of levels. And honestly, I, it doesn't matter whether it's me or whoever takes over that top leadership position, I think they're incredibly blessed. That was a term, I think, that your high school principal used with me today a number of times. "I feel blessed because..." And he would lay out why he felt blessed, and I stood there and I thought, "Not only would you feel blessed, I think whoever takes over this district will be blessed." So I will take that word from him today and use it tonight.
Before we go to closing, I think, my colleagues, anyone?
I wanted to follow up on sort of that administrative stream on six and eight. You had mentioned that when you got to Winchandon, you had administrative team that had, what's the best way to put it?
It was broken.
Okay.
It was a broken team.
But you had brought it along to where they are very similar to what you witnessed here in Ashland today.
Absolutely.
So I'm interested in understanding what types of techniques or approaches you'd use to take our administration, administrative team to where they are today and get them to the next level.
Yeah, move them. And that's, you know, when you take a look at the right fit, and one of the things that I'm looking for is taking a team from wherever it's at and moving it to the next level. That's a challenge that I would just embrace. And again, I think that you have all the right players in place right now. Our administrative team was looking for, and it really depends, it's going to depend on what your team feels it needs, and we can lay that out. I did the same thing with our administrative team. For example, they, they said, when I asked them, "What are things that you're going to need from me to support you?", there were things like, "We need, we need to be inspired." What does that look like? Well, we're looking for inspiration from our leader. They weren't looking for inspiration outside, they weren't looking for the road trips. They were looking for inspiration from within, and what could that look like? So that was something I took very, very seriously, and one of your administrators actually alluded to, to it earlier today and asking me about it. So, for example, when we do our summer retreat, we do it offsite, we don't do it anywhere within the district. Actually, we go back to the same place every year. We go back to a golf course, they have a quiet little room that's a fairly large for us to work in, and I use that time, we do it a couple of days, and I use that time as kickstarting and generating and motivating. For example, I think the first year I was there, we took a look at Rudy Giuliani's book on leadership and said, "Okay, let's chunk this off and let's talk about what he's..." Because it was an interesting take on leadership. Now, I know it wasn't school-based leadership, but it was leadership nonetheless. What are some important things there that we can take from there? Because I don't believe in managers, I believe in leaders. And that was a paradigm shift, too, for our administrators, because they weren't used to looking through that type of lens. But that was an example. You know, you do the book studies, you can do all kinds of things, but I think one of the most effective things for our team during that time period is, is we take a look, we look at all of our initiatives, we, we chart everything out on chart paper. As I think we'd mentioned to you when you were there, we do a lot of things on chart paper, because so many of us are visual, and we have the Eno board going in my office at the same time as all the chart paper around the room. And we work through the direction we feel we need to take as a team. And as a team, we all buy into it, and that's where we move. That's exactly what I think your team needs right now, is at that helm, you need to take a look and tie in fiscally with what's reasonable and what's fair, what is doable. I don't see any of this in, in Ashland, as I was going through today, but sometimes there's that penchant for taking so many initiatives and trying to do so much that you're not successful at, at anything. And my, my philosophy is, we'll only take off as much as we can really do and do a really good job of, so that we all feel successful. Now, as we all look to Toy Town, we all feel successful about Toy Town. It doesn't matter whether you're the high school principal or a sped director or a superintendent, we all own it. We all own it. So when we, if I was, and it's going to go back to what are things that you would do when you come into the district to improve, to that particular question, that would be one of the things I would look at, is establishing that with the administrative team. I, I think it's, you're much more successful when they bring it forward and you can tie it in a nice little package and say, "Then this is how we can make it move from here." That's probably the, the approach I would take. In Winchandon, when I first got there, and again, I'll never forget that very first meeting, when, when they couldn't, they couldn't look at me. It was, it was, it was very difficult. It was, and so I, I thought, "Okay, you know what? I'm going to give you some little paper here." I'm sure, people will tease me and tell me in my next lifetime I'm going to be an elementary teacher, and that could be the case, I don't know, because I'm always doing things visually. I said, "You know, we're going to take some chart paper, some construction paper, and we're going to have green, red, and yellow. On the red, I want you to write everything we need to stop doing. On the green, I want you to write everything we need to start doing, and on the yellow, I want you to do everything that we need to maintain. What's working for us?" And that's how we started, was just something that simple. And then I collected it all, set them off on their own, then divided them up into groups, brought it all back together, and said, "Okay, let's take a look at what, what you're telling me." And it was a very frank discussion, and that really, I think, was a catalyst for the frank discussions that happened thereafter. But it came from them, it did not come from me saying, "This is what I think you need to do," or "This is what I see." They fed it to me. I happened to just be blessed to be able to be the facilitator to move it forward from there. And honestly, that's exactly what I see with the team that you have right now. You've got a very solid team. It's very impressive. Your school district is very impressive.
Thank you for those answers and the compliments.
I, I actually have a question, because it occurs to me, we haven't talked about parents at all. So I'm not sure how to formulate the question. I kind of want to just put it on, talk to me about parents.
Let's, that's a great thing, because you're right, not one question you had here tonight spoke about parents at all. I don't, I don't necessarily see a lot of parents in, in general, in terms of visiting my office. By the time people come to my office, they're generally pretty cranky. I generally have cranky teachers, cranky administrators, cranky students that are on their way out the door, or cranky parents. That's generally what I deal with. By the time they get to my office, there's a, a general sense of crankiness about it. And my job, as I see it, is to kind of take that down a notch and try to find some way to, to collaboratively problem-solve. And I say collaboratively, because I generally don't have the solution. The solution is generally somewhere in the mix. But I would tell you that by the time a parent gets to me, they have a real issue. And I have learned so much about our district in Winchandon from those, even though they're few and far between, from those parent visits that come in. Generally, when they come in to see me, there is a real issue out, out there that I need to go back after and, and try to help solve, or fix, or mediate, or what have you. So there's that piece. There's another piece of parents, in terms of support. One of the things that so impressed me at your State of the Schools night was the number of parents filling the seats in the auditorium in this building. That was incredibly impressive. The whole night was impressive, but that was another flag in terms of knowing that your community values the education of its children. That's very reaffirming. And from my perspective, and I'm sure it was from yours as well, the fact that they were so supportive back and forth as they watched the administrators, I thought was, was particularly impressive. The other thing that caught my eye today, going from building to building, is the number of parent volunteers in the buildings. It didn't matter what building you were in, there were parents there in some form or another. Again, what a wonderful source of resource and strength for Ashland Public Schools. The fact that your parents want to be involved, I see it as a real bonus, I see it as a real source of strength. So I think there's, there's that piece. The fact that your parents are so supportive of your arts programs, you know, so supportive of your music programs, all of that, the clockers, I mean, and, and I thought, "Isn't it interesting?" And I just, I just have to tease you for a moment, as we sat here tonight and said, "That clock is probably off one moment." And I wanted to say, you know, I, that surprises me in this particular community, that it would be off one moment. And I thought I would tease, but then I thought better, so it's a good thing I didn't bring it up this evening at all. But you know, you do have some wonderful support. The other thing that caught my attention that night was how many parents went back to the cafeteria for refreshments after. That sends a, it sends a message and speaks volumes for the community of Ashland. I think parents play a vital, vital role in the education of their children. So I, I see them really as a source of strength and support for school district.
Where are they in the, in the, I, I love the idea of the green, yellow, red, by the way. That just speaks to me somehow. But where are parents in those kind of processes? Do they, have you, have you been able to bring parents in to sort of, you know, we've heard about the, the team and the collaboration with your administrators. Where have you used community members?
I think, you know, to be honest with you, you can't, and not that I'm suggesting you are, because you're not, but you cannot compare the community of Winchendon with the community of Ashland. It's just, they're just starkly different communities. And that's, that's not a negative to either community, it's just starkly different communities. I think, to be honest with you, in Winchendon, where we really needed to focus was not our community. I don't think our community was our problem. Our problems and our issues really stem from within. We had to fix ourselves inside first before we could even look for the trust from our community. Again, you heard me say at the very beginning, that trust was an issue in Winchendon. It's not nearly the issue right now, and I think in part because we've walked our talk, you know, as a school department. I think we have a great deal more trust from our community, from our town hall, our town fathers, certainly. You know, the first year I was there, our FinCom wouldn't support our budget that was minimum contribution for local contribution plus chapter 70. They wouldn't support the budget. And I was thinking, "Really? I didn't know that that could happen." I really didn't. But they didn't. And really, in part, it wasn't because it was a bad budget, it was because the trust wasn't there. Now, this year, when I spoke to the FinCom, they said, "You know, we don't think we're even going to have a subcommittee meeting this year. You just go ahead and bring it." Starkly different from where we were at. Winchendon Public Schools had to fix ourselves inside first, before the parents even wanted to come back in the door. But I would tell you, for example, if we have, I'll go back to Toy Town for a moment, if we have a concert at Toy Town, we have to do it twice, because that's how many people show up to our concerts. You know, we do like a two-setting at a restaurant. We have two settings for our concerts at Toy Town because so many people come out to them. You can't get into our plays at the high school because they're sold out. Three performances and they're sold out, you know? I would say the parents play a vital role, but in the beginning of my term there, I couldn't look to the parents to support us because that wasn't where our issue was. Our issues were in-house. It wasn't, it wasn't, from my perspective, the parents' issue.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, then I think it's time for a closing statement, please.
Closing statement, an hour and 10 minutes, I think we did well tonight, Mike. You know, I think I would want to close by going back to the question of the fit. I too am looking for the right fit, and I had alluded to that in some of my meetings today. I was looking for certain things that Ashland has. For example, I have not made application to a lot of superintendent positions out there right now. I was very selective in where I made application. When I looked at Ashland, a couple of things popped out at me. Well, first of all, it's very close to my home, which is very nice because it's a short drive. So that was the first thing that was appealing. So that was what caught my attention when I saw the advertisement. But then when I started to do the research and I looked into it a little bit more, I thought, "No, this is something I would like to be part of." I took a look at your growth model, I took a look at your AMCAST, I analyzed your financial data that's available, anything that was on the DESE website that I could analyze, I did it. I looked so deeply, I looked into every newspaper article I could possibly find on Ashland, good or bad, good or bad.
You read the blogs?
I did, I did, you know? I read everything I could possibly...
Yeah, and you're still here? Do you like us?
I do, very much, very much. I did all of that homework. And so when I took a look and I, and I could, when you read newspaper, and this is no offense to any newspapers, but when you read the newspapers, they don't, they give you a snapshot, because that's their job, to journalistically give you a snapshot of what it is. But I looked at it and I read between the lines, and I thought, "You know, I think I have a skill set that they're probably looking for in their next leader." And that was appealing to me, because you always want to set yourself and the school district up for success. You're really looking for a win-win, is what you're looking for. When I did the research and I looked at my own set of skills where I'm successful, I knew that there was a tie-in. If I didn't, if I didn't feel that I wasn't the right fit, I would have pulled out, I would have withdrawn, and I would have said, "This is not for me." I would have been honest about it, right from the beginning. And that should tell you, Kate, how I, the lens that I look through. I would have been very honest and said, "You know what, I've done the first homework, especially since the search committee meeting and tonight," because I continued to do the homework through that time period. I'm very, very comfortable with what I see, and I'm very comfortable with the few gaps that I see and feel that I could bring something to you. So having said all of that, I would love to be part of Ashland Public Schools. And I go back to walking out of the State of the Schools address that night and saying, "Who wouldn't want to be part of this school district?" To me, as I sat there with my husband, and I'd like to apologize, it was his cellphone that went off that night. I don't think I could have been any more embarrassed that night. And I turned to Isaac, "Really? You did not think to turn off your cellphones? We want you here." So I apologize profusely for my husband's cellphone that evening that went off.
Oh, yeah, that husband's cellphone.
But I will go back to that statement, "Who wouldn't want to be part of this district?" And I say that to you as I sit here tonight, and I sat in on all of those wonderful meetings. And the meetings today were not, they were not there to say, "We want you here." It's to say, "Here's how we're doing business." So it wasn't that they were trying to sell Ashland Public Schools, it's, "This is how we're doing business." And I come tonight saying, "It's a good fit, because I can see how they do business is how I do business, and I think it would be a good fit." I also want to thank the administrative team for showing me around. Barbara, you were a wonderful hostess today. I thoroughly enjoyed my time with her today and said that to her tonight, you know, getting out of the vehicle. She, I think she's done a fan, and I'm telling this, because I said this to you earlier today, I think you did a fantastic job as an interim superintendent. I told her from my perspective, she will be an incredible resource to whoever takes this job. She will know the ins and outs, the intricacies, she will know the intimacies that nobody else is going to know, but she will. And I think that that will be an incredible source of strength to whoever is sitting in this position. So I, again, I'm going to go back, I think you've got all things on fire right now, it's just a case of who's going to drive the car the rest of the way. I would love to be that driver. So I thank you very much for the opportunity to be here tonight. It has been a delight, the whole process, including having you come up to Winchendon, just really enjoyed my time with you, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful. All right, with that, we are finished with our agenda, so if I can take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Good night.